I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the roll call. All members are present except for Director Ben Hanson. I'd like a motion to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. The consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the bank recalculation statement from February 2015, approval of the school board minutes from the regular school board meeting on March 9th, the special board meeting on March 26th, the board study session on March 30th, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed. Oops, sorry. And also E, designated the identified official to access the MDE secure website. And F, achievement and integration revenue for the fiscal year 2016 budget workshop. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
So moved.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Melissa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. As listed, we don't normally have to say those out in open. Of note, I would just say the take charge of education program through Target is giving $5,313.38 to the Prior Lake High School. The Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign Program for Prior Lake High School. Thank you to Loretta Spurley, Susan Lundquist, Laura Valet, Joe Samuels, and the Wells Fargo Matching Gift Program of Laura Hendricks, Diana Haidt, and Diane Ramsey. And also $461 for Bristol Meyer Squibs through their company employment giving program for the Early Childhood Special Education Program. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts as listed?
So moved.
By Chad, second.
Second.
By, sorry, my brain's missing tonight.
Dan.
By Dan, thank you. This is a roll call vote. Chad?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 6-0. Laker Pride, I don't think we have anything up for tonight. The open forum is a 15-minute time period set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum segment. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we go to personnel items and Matt.
All right. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Groover. First up, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment and am seeking board approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
I'll second that motion.
By Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0.
And next, I would like to present the following retirements. Barb Cavan, who's been with the district for four years and has made a tremendous impact on what we've, on the service we've been able to provide within special education in the district. And working very closely with Barb and just like to give a big, a big thank you and wish her very well in the future here. Rita Kern, who's been with the district for 14 years and has been a hugely important pillar at Edgewood over the last couple of years especially as programs have transitioned and she will be greatly missed. Dave Thomas, who happens to be with us here tonight after 35 years of service to the district. And as I've discussed with Dave, just the sheer number of students that he's been able to make an impact on over those years is staggering and, you know, just what he was brought to the culture at Hidden Oaks and throughout our system has been phenomenal. So a big thank you there. And then Pam Winfield is retiring from Westwood after 12 years. And a couple of notes there. Pam's been a huge advocate for all of the students and staff at her building. She helped us to open Sage Academy, which has been tremendously successful. And I had the chance to speak with her staff a week ago to talk a little bit about what the hiring process would look like. And I can just say that after their reaction, she will be greatly missed. So hugely respected in that building. So with that, I present the following retirements.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the district retirements as listed?
So moved.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Melissa. Any comments, board?
Dave? Thank you so much for what you've done for this district. I know firsthand from speaking with my daughters throughout Hidden Oaks and their career there. So you've been a huge impact on their life. Thank you for what you've done. You've been a huge impact for a lot of kids' lives here at the district. So thank you again.
And I think I just echo those comments. Those are big, big names in our district. And like as Matt said, the amount of lives that you've touched and the work that you've done with your life is very recommendable. And so thank you for all your years of service, truly.
I guess I should go on to say Pam, thank you for your time. It's not without us noticing that. And Rita and also Barb Cavan, thank you very much.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0.
Next, I present the following leaves of absence and am seeking board approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the following leaves of absence?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. And then...
And next, I do have a staffing request for the board this evening. And this is an incremental increase to two separate positions, the first of which being the ECFE Head Secretary at Edgewood and also an increase to the Head Secretary at Prior Lake High School. Both of these represent moving employees from essentially an 11-month contract to a 12-month contract. And the need for this has arisen as programming has just continued to be added to those sites. Edgewood is providing services to families and there's staff operating in that building all year round and it's been very difficult to operate without consistent support in the office there. And then it's really the exact same rationale for the high school position. That's, there's no longer any kind of a seasonal aspect to the high school. There's activities there every day of the year. So with that, I present the following changes.
All right. Do I have a motion for the educational support staff at the ECFE Head Secretary and the Head Secretary? By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. No old business and on to new business. Mr. Rodine, I think you're up next with the winter activities update.
Dr. Groover, Tucker, how we doing tonight? Uh-oh. Where'd my slide presentation go? It's gone. This off the cuff then, so it may take a while. Mr. Delwell, I hope you appreciate that.
You're getting some technical help from the back.
It's in the bottom left. Right in the middle. Oh, there it is. Get my eyes checked. Probably help a little bit. We had another great season with winter activities. It was, it's a lot of fun to be a part of. I definitely will miss many of the winter sports next year. Some I will not, but yeah, it was, it was a great, great time. We'll jump right into it. Wrestling, wrestling went 23 and 10, 6 and 2 in the conference, but the big thing is placed third in state. This year, it, Shakopee was right on our heels. They beat us in the regular season and they were talking that it was their turn to make it after, after many years defeating, being defeated by us. And we ended up turning the tide on them in the section finals. It was, it was exciting to say the least where our kids that were underdogs went out and defeated their kids. So we ended up beating them in the section final and then going into state again and losing to Apple Valley for the third year in a row in the semis. No, losing to Apple Valley for the third year in a row, this time in the semis, but then winning the third place match over Wilmer. State champions, Alex Hart, two-time state champion. He was undefeated this year. Riley had a tough draw in the, in the state tournament, ended up fifth. Kenny and Zach also ended up fifth. They will be returning, the younger two will be returning, as well as Curtis Lemare, who was also a state qualifier. Girls' basketball, a little bit of a change on there. Ended up 16 and 11, 10 and 7 in conference with a debacle with Rosemont having to forfeit the last game, actually canceled the last game on us. And we ended up fifth place in the, in the conference, lost a tough heartbreaker in overtime to Shakopee in the, in the section finals. Absolutely phenomenal game. Our senior Shay Barton hit three free throws to tie it up with 23 seconds left, but we couldn't get it done in overtime unfortunately. North Star Girls Hoops, which is one of the big AAU followers and high school followers, it's a whole organization that ranks kids, called us the breakout team of the year. It was, it was an awesome season by these girls. They came together as a team and, and really worked without any pure all-star. They just worked as a team. It was, it was a lot of fun to watch. Boys' basketball, a little disappointing season, 13 and 14, 10 and 8 in conference. So we did pretty well in conference. Could've won a couple of games there that we didn't and then lost, lost in the semis to Chaska. Ended up five seed in the, five, six seed, six seed in the section. So won the, won the first game against Jefferson where we, they were the three seed and then couldn't get it done against Chaska. Girls' hockey, another tough season for them. We had a lot of seniors. We were hoping to have a better, a better record than that, but didn't quite go as well as planned. 7 and 11 in the conference and then lost to Edina. Boys' hockey, this is wrong. I need to correct this. I apologize for that. We ended up 16, 8, and 1 and were second in the conference to Lakeville North, who was the eventual state champion and undefeated. We lost the section semifinal game to Burnsville in overtime. This is partially due to one of my errors. I had a eligibility error that I had to deal with the hockey league or the high school league with. So we had a student that played for us that was deemed ineligible and then he could not compete in the last four regular season games and then the section games. So I think we could've possibly done a little bit better if I hadn't have made that mistake, but that happened. And boy, I apologized for that one over and over. So next, we have boys' swimming, another fantastic year by our swimmers. They ate and won in the conference. Their only loss was to Egan, who was the eventual state champion. Section champion, second year in a row. Alex Lef just dominated in sections. It was just incredible performance. He won the 51, I think won the 100. It was just everything he swam and he was just amazing. Coach H. Kraft was the section coach of the year. Didn't finish quite as well in state this year. We didn't have any state champions, but once again, a great performance by our swimmers. Nordic Ski, they missed it by, boy, I'll have to get this right. I think they missed going to qualifying for state by two points. I think it was two points. So that means basically if we would've finished one kid higher and another team would've finished one kid lower, we would've qualified. But awesome year for them. Boys, fifth. And then we had some individual state qualifiers as well. So that, that program continues to grow and it's with the, the leadership of, of Coach Kevin Panzer and Julie Lundquist that kids just keep coming out for that sport. I think we've doubled in size since I've been here, just because, because the kids love being a part of it. Cheer, cheer continues to do real, really, really well. They qualified, went down to nationals for the third year in a row. And we're also the Salsuburban Conference Champions, which, which is, that's a first for those ladies. So a nice job for them. Dance line, another program that when I first arrived here seven years ago, the, my predecessor said, "I'm leaving this one to you. This program's a mess." And with the, the help of Christie and the other coaches, that program and the, and the parents, I should say as well, that program has become a very successful program for us, qualifying for state for the third year in a row in jazz. We did not qualify in high kick and that's a good thing. And that meant that we stayed out of the paper and didn't have to deal with any of that. So I told the coach, when I talked with him Sunday after all that, that happened on Saturday night, I said, "I've never been so happy to not qualify for state." So, but no, they did, they did really well. Alpine, this is another program that continues to get bigger and bigger. Dave Eversen is our head coach with that one and he's got kids coming out left and right wanting to be a part of that program. They finished the highest they've ever finished and we're young. We've had, we had a couple of great leaders, Jake Seifert and Charlie Scarre were our captains this year and they, they did a great job, but we've got youngsters coming out left and right from seventh grade and higher to be a part of that program and it's fun to see. Knowledge Bowl, once again, they were, I have to add to this one, they were also the Salsuburban Conference Champions as well. So we've got that one. Fourth at regionals, qualified for state. They ended up finishing ninth in state. I just talked to Brian Olson this afternoon, who's our assistant coach. Andy Franklin is our head coach. And he said that's right, kind of where they were looking to finish. And he said, "We're young" and he expects to win the state with Knowledge Bowl the next year. Mock trial, three teams a season, so not quite as many as, as last year. Last year, I think we had 55 kids out, a little bit less this year. The big tournament over in Apple Valley is the Minneapolis and we placed third in that, but did not qualify in regionals. Gymnastics, we had Barbie Cass took a leave of absence for a year, so we had to replace her as a coach. Team did pretty well, third in sections, missed, missed second place by just a couple tenths of a point. Kaylee Dubrinsky's kind of our big stud. She was third all around in the, in the sections and then 11th at the state tournament overall, which is pretty amazing considering some of those gymnasts. And then One Act, One Act, we had a new, a new advisor this year, Philip, who replaced Jenny Witt, who's, who's now one of our Q-COM coordinators. And Philip brought some of that professional experience in. And if you went to the One Acts, you saw a couple of very entertaining, funny ones. And then the competition one, I didn't understand very much, but it was highly dramatic. And we finished first in the subsection and third in the section. We lost to Apple Valley and Eastview in the section, but it was very well done by the performers. Hit that one already? Hey, here we go. Robotics, robotics, they're still in progress. They have Worlds coming up and the Minnesota State High School League Championships coming up. They've done well in regionals. They did qualify by winning the Engineering Inspiration Award, which I have no idea what it means, but it's something that's really good. Music, we continue to thrive with, with the music and, you know, I can go through all the names here, but it's just one after the other. And if you go to any of our concerts, holy cow, some of the best that you see. Nicole Bellis, I believe Nicole's a freshman, you know, the oboe, which looks like a lot of fun to play, but Best Insight, Brayden, Emily, Ryan Glazer, all, all excellent awards. And then a couple of our kids for the, for the honor band. Rob Hahn, this is pretty cool. Student National Anthem Team. We have kids now going to every site to sing the National Anthem. For those of you that go to away sites and hear the recording over and over, it's pretty cool to have our kids come to, they came to every game by the end of the winter season and have already started coming to every single spring event to sing the National Anthem. So a lot of fun and that's including everybody in, in our programs, saying that it truly is co-curricular. Our speech team rocked it again. Best finish in, in team history, second place in sections to, to Lakeville North. We had 25 kids in the finalists, which is just incredible. And then we are sending 11 to state, which is going to be Saturday at Lakeville North, highest in, in the history. And you can see all of those right there. If you've never seen a speech meet, it is, it is truly amazing that these kids stand up in front of, in front of these judges and can do what they do. They are, they are incredibly gifted. And we have one student that is, has qualified in the National Forensic League, going to nationals in, in June. So, so congratulations to Zach on that one as well. Our lovely surveys that, that we, that we go over, I was telling board member Sorenson, he goes, "How'd they look?" I hadn't had a chance to look at them yet. And I said, "Hey, these are the worst ever." So it's, you know, it's incredible to see some of the success that we have on the court, on the field, on the stage, but the critiquing that we get is somewhat tough. Now, I will say, and when you look at these individually, that there are a couple of programs that weigh toward the negative more than others. So this is the overall that Martha sends me, but if you look at individual programs, you will see some glaring differences in that. So to look at some comparisons, if you look at honoring the game, which is what we try to emphasize here at Prior Lake High School and throughout the state, obeying the rules actually went up a couple of percentages. And I, and I know you don't see those in front of you, but I'll let you know, last year, that was 51% by the parents. Showed respect to officials actually went up three, three percentage points. Treated players with respect and treated opponents with respect stayed the same at 41 and 50%, respectively. These are some of the things that we want our coaches to do on a constant basis. So while you see some, some good numbers there, we want those to be higher. Redefined winner, and this is where you start to see some, some glaring differences. Rewarded effort, not just results. This year, 41%, strongly agree. Last year, 32. So that's, that's saying that overall, we're looking at effort and saying, hey, that's good. Help players learn and improve up about 8%. And bounce back from mistakes, which is one of the things that we talked about, 35%. Emotional tanks, this is, this is something that we talk about not only with our coaches, but everybody, you know, trying to, it's very easy to cut down somebody and, and take away all that positive energy. So when I look at these and see the strongly disagrees as the highest mark, that's, that's not a good thing at all. So we're not using, using positive reinforcement when our highest mark is 27%, strongly disagree, that's not too good. Encouraging players to do their best, 41% strongly disagree. Made the sport fun, that's something that, you know, those of us involved in activities, it's co-curricular, but it should be an enjoyable thing. And when it's not enjoyable, that tends to, to not be a good thing. And then from the parent's side, 61, 62% want, want their kids to play for that coach again. Student responses, we had a little bit less than last year. Last year, we had 100 and I wanted to let you know that. Some of these did go up. Obeying the rules, it went, last year it was at 57, now it's down to 51. These all go down. Show respect for officials, last year 52, this year 48. Treated players with respect, last year 52, this year 48. And then treated opponents with respect, last year 61, this year 53. So, you know, we're, we're lacking in some of these areas. This one as well, strongly agree. Rewarding effort, down 3%. Help players learn and improve, down 1%. And help players bounce back, down 5%. So that's not where we want to be within our, within our programs. And then the glaring one, the bottom one, number four there, would you play for this coach again? Last year, we were at 77%, this year 56%. So, and like I said, look at those individual ones and, and I think you'll see where we had some, some issues. I do want to talk about intermerrills. This was a, a big deal when, when I first got here, that we needed to get something started. And I think it has been successful and I hope to see this even become more successful under the direction of Beth. And she, she pushes this thing hard and it's, it's fun to see. This year, we had 82 players in the ninth and 10th grade and 98 in 11th and 12th grade basketball. Highly competitive. We've got kids out there that, you know, could be easily playing on Tuesday and Friday nights that for one reason or the other choose not to. And they're out there and they, they're getting it done. It's, it's fun basketball to watch. And as you can see, 10 teams in each division. And then Beth, also, we started ping pong two years ago. This year, we had more kids than ever. And then she actually brings them out to the Minnesota State Championship at, at Harding, where there's teams from all over the metro area and you can see the small picture down there. We, we were the consolation champions. But those kids had an absolute blast. They played on Monday nights in the, in the fall and it was, it was exciting experience. So intermerrills are going well. We do not have intermerrills in the spring and a lot of that has to do with court time and field time. And, and also, you know, most of our kids are out doing something in the spring with track. We're over 100 for each, each, each gender. Lacrosse is busting at the seams. Baseball, full five levels, softball, four levels. So we've got more kids out than ever before. So I think that's one of the things that we need to maybe figure out, but we'll keep trying to reinvent the wheel with intermerrills. Any questions? I know Jim Delwell probably has quite a few because he wants me to stand up here for a while, but any questions?
I have a question, Eric. The intermerrills, is that girls and boys?
It is.
Oh, really?
But at this time, you know what? Girls haven't been involved. We need to find something that girls are interested in. Yep. And, you know, I think what we'll probably end up having to do, and now that we're going to get some volleyball standards in some other locations, we may have to go offsite, which isn't ideal, but we may be able to do something like that.
You mentioned your survey results were a little bit more negative than you had hoped for. Have you developed any action plans to maybe turn that around?
You know what? That's a good question. And I work with the coaches and the, and the coaches see these and we talk about what we're going to do. You know, looking at these, you'll see where the problems were and hopefully we're fixing those, those problems. But I think that we're in such a highly competitive area that, you know, that people want playing time and I understand that and it's harder to get where a school, it's 2,500 kids now. But we work with the coaches. Every single coaches' meeting has not only managerial, but, but leadership information that, that we try to bring them, that, that they need to start working on every single day. And that's how the evaluation process is looked at too, is, is it's not about, I mean, wins and losses, are they important? But how are you teaching those things that we talk about in that survey is, is more important.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And as I was going through those surveys, Eric, the couple of sports for boys and girls both play, I think it's just hockey and basketball.
Right.
You could decipher which one was which, but not all the time. Could those be broken out in the future into boys and girls?
I think Martha can do that. Can we, I think we can probably get that done and send that out to you.
Yeah, for the most part.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I forgot to ask Martha to do that, but yeah, we can get that done. She's the survey master.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Next up, targeted services update by Doug Kern.
First up, the board. Dr. Groover, thanks for your time this evening. First up the board, Dr. Gruber, thanks for your time this evening. The targeted services update is seeking approval for the programs for the summer, for this summer, and these are for our at-risk kids across the district, and they would receive additional tutoring and teaching in the summer. And just as a reminder to the board, these are cost-neutral programs. All of the instruction that occurs is based upon student attendance, and that student attendance generates the funding by which we pay the teachers. And so, as I had mentioned earlier, it is cost-neutral, no cost to the district, and these are the times when the programs would occur, and so, we are seeking approval, just as we have in the past, from the board in regards to our summer programs, so that we can go ahead and pursue the teachers that would be working with these students this summer.
Do I have a motion to approve the targeted services summer school schedule?
So moved.
By Rich, second.
Second.
By Dan. Any questions? I just have one, Doug, which I forgot. Do we, is there busing or anything for this?
For some of the elementary students, we're looking at the possibility of busing, but that's still to be determined at this point.
And we haven't done that before, or have we done that before?
We have done that in the past, on some occasions, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. And next up, special ed.
Yeah, sharing with you what we do on a yearly basis, our child count, and this is based upon December 1st. All the districts across the state review their child counts based upon the December 1st child count. As you can see, we have, we're getting close to 1,000 special ed students within our district, up a bit from last year. We, 12.8% of our students are in special education. This compares with the state average, which is between 13.6 and 14% across the state. And if you look at a couple of the numbers that stood out, at least for me, that went up from the previous year was in speech and language impaired, went up from 194 to 219. And developmental delay, which is our early childhood special ed kids, they went up from 71 to 92. And so, those two groups of students account for most of the increase that we see in these numbers. The other one that we've paid attention to very recently in regards to working with the AdSIS grant is our specific learning disability students. And those students have pretty much maintained a level number the past few years, and we work closely with Amy Jankey in that regard, because that is a big effort in our AdSIS grant, is making sure that those numbers do not increase and in fact decrease. And if you look at, in '05-'06, we had 188 LD students out of 768 special ed students, and this year, we have 183 LD students out of 977 students. So, in '05-'06, they accounted for 12% of our total, and, excuse me, in '05-'06, they were 24% of the total special ed students, and now, this year, they're 19% of our special ed students. So, we've actually been able to decrease the number of students being identified with learning disabilities, which is a good thing, and a credit to the people working with the AdSIS program also. I just wanted to update you on these figures, and certainly would answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Three Rivers Park District Collaborative Expansion Naturalist in Residence Project. A lot of words.
Good evening, Chair Ruel, members of the board, Dr. Gruber, Amy Jankey, and I are here tonight with a request to continue a partnership with the Three Rivers Park District and Richardson Nature Center for a naturalist in residence. It's a position or partnership we established for the current school year, and so, moving forward for next year, we're requesting funding to continue that partnership to the extent that we can. We do have in the audience tonight Dennis Hahn, Director of Outdoor Education for the Three Rivers Park District, just to recognize him here this evening, but if you have questions, Amy would be able to address some of those, or Mr. Hahn would also, but at this time, we are seeking board approval this evening to move forward with this partnership for the '15-'16 school year.
Okay. Any questions, anyone? Proceed.
Just wanted to say that this is one of the issues we talked about in our study session. There you go.
All right. All right, do we have a motion to approve the Three Rivers Park District Collaborative Expansion Naturalist in Residence Project for next year?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
Second.
By Todd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0.
Thank you.
All right, and next up is the District Management Council Collaboration. Dr. Gruber.
Yes, we also talked about this at the study session. The District Management Council is out of Boston, and they have been working with districts across the nation, most recently with a group of districts in the northeast portion of metro area, on helping them determine the level of success that we're having with our at-risk learners. And we are hoping to go in partnership with Eastern Carver County, Farmington, Shakopee, and ourselves, with the Southwest Metro District, to look at this in our area, to determine what are our efforts, and how are they being impacted by the numbers of dollars that we're putting in, the great work that we have of our teachers working with students at risk, and what are the results. So, it's really looking at a deep dive into what our current practice is, as is related to best practice. It'll be an individual study of our district, and then the entire report will be put together for the four districts together. So, at that point in time, then we'll learn how to do this kind of evaluation, and be able to come back and look at this again, year after year. So, tonight is the recommendation to move forward, looking at raising the academic levels of our at-risk learners.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the District Management Council Collaboration?
I'll make that motion.
By Rich, second.
Second.
By Dan. Any discussion questions? I believe we talked about this, I was not there, but the study session and at that time, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. Okay. All right, I'm going to find my spot on the board here. Next up is the school board meeting schedule. It leaves in your packet, the dates are listed, basically staying with the regular meeting at the earlier part of the month and the study session at the end. These dates will go through Mondays through July 13th of this year till June of 2016. Everybody have a chance to look at that? Pretty much the same it's been. Okay, do I have, do we have to motion this, Martha? We do? The date's right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed board meeting schedule for 2015-16?
So moved.
By Chad, second.
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. And then next up is the superintendent evaluation process, and I know we've put the policy in there, 304, for your review. We have the timeline, and basically, this is what we've done the last few years that I've been on the board. It's a chance for both the board and administrators to give feedback through surveys and, you know, that, and then we review it, the executive board of it, which would be myself, Todd, and Dan, as you see the timeline listed, so that we can have statements and public comment and public statement being read. So, does anybody have any questions on the schedule? Does that look okay? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent timeline evaluation?
So moved.
By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Todd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. Next up is policy, the first reading of 515, the protection and privacy of student records. Do you want to take this one over?
Kristi Musman's going to come up to the microphone. We visited with Kristi and Marcus Malazo regarding our policy 515, and they come up with some recommendations on simplifying this process.
Right, 515 is a policy we've been kind of keeping our eye on, mostly as it pertains to the last page, the opt-out form. Reason being is, we've had a lot of technology increases over the last few years, and that form was getting a little cumbersome. So, we kept adding to it with iPads and Chromebooks, and it got a little confusing, so we decided to keep them separate. We'll keep technology with technology and directory information with 515 where it's supposed to be. So, we're hoping that by simplifying that a little bit, that will help parents. There was some confusion, a few parents opted out of things that they really didn't want their child to be opted out of. So, we hope that this will make it a little bit easier to understand.
Okay, so, we basically separated the form, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and so, instead of one form, we're now two forms.
So, yep, there's two forms. We'll send those out, as we do in August, a couple times to parents, so that they, it's right in front of them, so they know that they have that as an option, and we'll continue to collect those. I'll collect the directory information, and Marcus will get the technology pieces.
Okay, and this is a first read, so obviously, you know, get feedback. If you have questions or concerns, you can contact any of us on the policy committee or Kristi. Are you doing 524, too? Or no, that's together, sorry.
Yep.
Okay, second and final reads on 514.1, which is the chemical use and abuse procedures for students. This we updated.
We updated this to include synthetic tobacco, and this has had a first read and input from the board. We took that back to the policy committee, which is Melissa, Stacy, and I, and reviewed that again, so you can see where the changes have been made to include the wording that we thought was most appropriate. We did not include all of the wording from MSBA. We felt like some of it was really overkill. We really wanted to make sure that we had these words that we understood in here. So, that's the revisions that we proposed to you tonight.
Any questions on that?
Just, I like the, how you rewrote number E there, addressed the concerns we brought up at the first reading, so.
Right, we rewrote it to, so that in the definitions, under E, smoking means inhaling or exhaling smoke from any lighted cigar, cigarette, pipe, or any other lighted tobacco or plant product. This also includes the use of electronic cigarettes, including the inhaling and exhaling of vapor from any electronic delivery device.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the 514.1 policy, chemical use and abuse?
I'll make that motion.
By Rich, second.
Second.
By Melissa. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. Next one is the school, here we go, the food allergy and anaphylaxis network.
And if I may, this is a guideline, school guidelines, that was reviewed by our new food service director, Janine Peterson, and under food service responsibility, she made the change regarding allergens. To read students with special diet needs wishing to purchase an a la carte item, must work with their food service manager to check food labels before purchasing. And this is basically best practice.
The same, yeah, it's the best practice, and it was, yeah, this is the same as what was the first reading, so there hasn't been any changes, no plan. Do I have a motion to approve the FAN school guidance for, as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
Second.
By Todd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. And policy 904.
And policy 904 is the distribution of materials. We have now termed information on school district property by non-school persons and employees, and this has to do with the electronic board at Twin Oaks Middle School, and we worked with Gina Fern on this, a policy rewrite, so that we would be inclusive of using that electronic message board with a request form. So, you can see that that is, has not had any other changes made to it, and is ready for your vote tonight.
Do I have a motion to approve policy 904, distribution of information on school district property by non-school people and employees?
So moved.
Todd, second.
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. What's the next? All right, superintendent report.
Right, today was the Minnesota Education Job Fair. For the third year in a row, we had a very large contingent of administrators attend this event, and as in recent years, we were able to interview students that are just graduating right now, or very currently, very recent graduates, to look for positions that we know we'll be hiring over the spring and summer. So, this gives us opportunity to look at candidates outside of the actual hiring season and get some information about them, so that we can then bring them back to our school district prior to them being hired by others. So, some of those very hard-to-find areas of teaching really help us get to them at this time, rather than wait until later in May or June. Anything else, anyone wants to add on that? Hiring fair, successful?
Just really briefly, I would just like to thank everybody that participated, because it's a lot of work, and it's a long day, but it's a very fun day. You know, it's just great. The energy in the room is really fantastic, and it's fun to be a part of, but also a lot of work, so just thanks.
Great, thank you. And coming up is our Community Crisis Response Team meeting. Every year, we, in the spring, we have, we pull all of our administrators together, along with our crisis responders and law enforcement from Scott County, Prior Lake, and Savage. And during this meeting, we'll go through a scenario to practice our crisis management plan and protocols, so that we can be better prepared to meet any crisis when it occurs. We do this, and then we review our protocols to make sure that we're up to speed with what we need to be doing, and make changes as we need to. So, that's coming up in May. Our South Suburban superintendents, our district, along with other districts in our conference, have been carefully watching this legislative session in terms of what we might expect for our future funding. Representatives have been contacted urging them to include increases of at least 2% per year to the general education formula for E12, education in the state's next biennial budget. As you know, a less than 1% increase is being proposed in the House, and a 1% is being proposed in the governor's budget and senate spending targets. We've undergone more than a decade of less-than-inflationary funding increases, which has led to significant budget challenges for school districts across our state. We are thankful for program improvements such as our full-day kindergarten, but we're asking to receive at least an inflationary increase to avoid future budget cuts right here in Prior Lake Savage area schools. So, in keeping with that, we've written a letter on behalf of all the South Suburban superintendents to all of the legislators, in hopes of following up again with them very, very quickly on how this session is moving, and even really watching it carefully as we move forward.
I just want to update, to update the board on the kindergarten numbers are at 506 for next year, so that's what we have registered currently. And also, I just wanted to let you know, I've been kind of watching the fee pays since this was the first year we implemented fee pay, and we've had $1.8 million flow through the fee pay system already this year. And that includes lunch and activity fees and those types of things. So, that's quite a chunk of money that I can see parents are really using it, and I think it's been really successful in our district.
And just a quick update from the insurance committee. We are operating this year under some new legislative rules when it comes to going out to bid for our insurance providers, our TPA, and on account of that and some other factors, we are running into some timing issues, because there's timing that's given to us by the legislature, and we're trying to do a pretty exhaustive, deeper dive than we've done in the past as well, in terms of who can really provide the very best service and discount. the very best service and discounts to the district. And so where that's bringing us is that in order to make the best informed decision, we're really going to be coming down to the wire with timelines. And so we'll be bringing this to the board. We may need to look at opening up a study session in order to take a vote on premium increases, or just our rates. So more to come on that, but just wanted to give everyone a heads up that it'll be business as usual, however we might need to, to take a look and be a little bit flexible with the dates on when we bring that forward.
All right. Board reports, any board reports?
Melissa and I had the district curriculum advisory committee meeting, right? And we talked about the AdSIS program, the innovation zone questions that we talked about in the study session, and also followed up on iPad, summer usage, on how they're going to get turned in, along with any, lots of other topics, so.
Anything else? I know we have policy this Thursday, so we'll be coming down the bank. All right, student council.
All right, so we, right now, over this past weekend, was the MASC, MAHS state convention, and we sent six representatives there. And as of today, our current student council vice president, Maddie Tyson, was elected the vice president of the Minnesota Association of Student Councils, so the whole state. So that's a big deal for her. And so we're very proud of her for that. And we also, right now, we're working on our spring activities. So some that we are bringing back is an outdoor movie, and a talent show, and a kickball tournament. And then we are planning one new event that we have not nailed down yet, but we are working on it, so. And, yeah.
We use the new scoreboard for the movie.
Yeah, we might. We're still, we have to figure out how to sync up the sound with the video on there, which, yeah. But I know we've done things like that in the past, so it's a possibility, something we've been working on, so.
All right. Future events. April 22nd will be the second round of superintendent interviews. April 21st is parent-teacher conferences for K through 5 in the evening. April 22nd is administrative professional days. April 27th is our board study session at 6:00. And May 4th will be our regular school board meeting at 7:00 here at the DSC. With that, seeing nothing else, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes 6-0. Thank you.
Did Andrew use sound system?